All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order please with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Roll call, Mr. Lombard?
Um.
Yes.
Cody?
Yeah.
Clumper?
Yes.
Saxor?
Yes.
Tellka?
Yes.
All right, next item, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes anyone wishes to make to the agenda this evening?
I'd like to move the first item under the consent agenda into conversation, please.
Okay, so under general business, under consent approval, we'll move item number one to approve the eCare health services above the line. That will be the change. Are there any other changes? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest or waiver requests that I see tonight takes us to the approval of the meeting minutes from our July 15th meeting. If there are no questions, concerns, additions, or deletions, I would entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have not heard any expression of community input tonight, so that takes us to our financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard?
I'll take any questions any of the board members would have. Quite a lengthy list of bills that we submitted in your board packet. Nineteen pages, total of $2,218,000. Anybody have any specific questions on the bills?
Paul, I had a quick question. So I noticed there's a lot of technology and software type things. Is August a big month for that?
Yeah, generally pay for that to begin in the school year, so that's a huge. And then all of our computers are coming in and so the hardware alone is over a million dollars for the year, so. The only thing I had noted is there was a bill to crouch recreation for playgrounds at Fred Assam Elementary. The city of Sioux Falls will pay for a portion of that, about $44,000 of that bill because it's a joint project, city-school project. Are there any questions? The advanced payments were $1,656 and the food service bills were $9,400.
Any further questions on bills and claims from Mr. Lombard? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard?
The cash report for the month of July, coming into the month, just under $11.5 million, $2.3 million of receipts in July, and $5.2 million of expenditures in July, left $8.5 million in cash at the end of the month, of which 6.2 million was in the general fund, 1.4 million in the capital outlay fund, 781,000 in the special education fund, 53,000 in the pension fund, and 54,000 in the enterprise fund. The $2,318,000, $19,000 is itemized on the next two pages. Investment CD at First National Bank for an amount of $1 million. Investment report, payroll and benefit summary for the month of July, $1,469,000 of payroll. Related benefits and tax deductions are shown for your review. Trust and agency statement of $122,000. We have abbreviated financial reports these first three months of the fiscal year, so. Due to the temperature in this room, that's a good thing.
Hearing no questions from Mr. Lombard, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented tonight.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Lombard. That takes us to general business items, administration reports, administrative center, Superintendent Larson.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Chair. Just a few quick items to update you on. Report card review. Our administrative team, or members of our administrative team, attended a work session in Pierce, South Dakota to work with the Department of Education on the upcoming report card release and worked through some reports that we could pull to evaluate student growth and those types of things. Certainly appreciate our administrative team members that were able to attend for attending and also the Department of Education for that opportunity. The formal appeal window actually begins today and it closes on September 23rd. What I would note, what I would note, sorry, August 23rd, what I would note is that previously there was always a preliminary release of data and then you were able to do an informal appeal. That's not the way it is this year. This year there is one appeal window and one appeal only. There's no informal-formal, so it does, like I said, opens today. The public release of the report card is scheduled for the middle of September. Was proud to receive a message from Niche School District Rankings. Brandon Valley School District was number one in South Dakota. We were informed on August 8th, that's a 2020 ranking. Our two growth pool teachers, both teachers have been placed at Brandon Elementary. Our second grade growth pool teacher was actually placed late last spring, early summer, so they were able to continue to accept open enrollments and process new students at that grade level. Our second pool teacher was placed at fourth grade in Brandon Elementary on August 8th, and that was done through the evaluation of numbers and class size and our best way to meet our student needs as outlined in our strategic plan. So that's where those two individuals have gone. Wanted to give the board just a brief update. You may notice that we are not approving technology coaches or literacy coaches here in August. That's a common thing that we've done in the past. But we will be rebranding those positions as STLs or what we call STEM teacher leaders. I will be redefining some job descriptions and expectations. Again, that's directly aligned to our strategic plan. Director Nelson will be working with the Student Activities Curriculum and Technology Committee, keeping them informed of that process as we move forward. I would note that we hope for an implementation beginning in January. Couple items to note for the academic calendar. The bus pass deadline has come and gone. I want to thank all of our parents and guardians that met that deadline. It is critical as the planning and preparation to transport over 2,000 kids is substantial. And in addition to that, I want to thank our parents and guardians for their understanding as we navigate the road construction season here this fall. It may present some interesting challenges for us, but I have no doubt that we will all work together to get our kiddos to school and home safely. With that being said, new staff on the 14th. We have staff coming back on the 15th, the 19th, and the 20th, and we have our all-staff welcome back and luncheon on the 20th starts at 10:30 a.m. Lunch will start shortly thereafter. First day of school is August 21st. I want to give a special thank you to our buildings and ground staff for the phenomenal job they've done here this summer, out and about checking buildings. We are ready to go, so shout out to Director Henshaw and all of his staff on the preparation work for this coming school year. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions you may have.
All right, mine is more of a comment on, again, the number one school district in South Dakota. That news came out, and again, huge amount of gratitude to all of those that are sitting here in the room goes to all of the leadership in the district. I think the number of comments that come in, it's not the first time that Brandon Valley has gotten this news, but it never gets tiring of hearing it. I think it comes probably with an extra weight of continuing to keep that up and entering a new school year, but there's just this huge amount of pride that comes with it. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to all the leaders of each of the buildings throughout the district, but also all the teachers, the parents, the students. I know how much effort goes into all the academics, the sports, the grounds, everything that makes this a number one school district, and it makes just incredible to be a part of it, not only have a child, but just to be in the community. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing to get ready for another school year. I know your summers have already stopped and school year has begun, and I just can't thank you enough, so it's incredible. Can't buy a house here because everyone wants to be here.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything additional tonight? No. Takes us to the high school, Mr. Schlockaway?
All right, I'll be brief. Just wanted to give you an update on where we're at at the high school. Last Tuesday, we welcomed 140-plus seniors to the high school for the senior retreat, and that day kind of helps prepare for freshman unity day, which is tomorrow. So we expect over 100 senior volunteers and over 300 freshmen in the building tomorrow. So we're rolling, and we added, I think, three kids today, so good problems to have.
Thank you. Mr. Fraking? No? Nothing? Okay. Mr. Thorson?
Just like Mr. Schlockaway, we are off and rolling with scheduling new kids and things such as that. I just want to highlight one change that we are doing this year for the parent orientation night for technology. Ran into a lot of scheduling things with parents, so we are going to try it this year on open house night. So we're going to run two different sessions on open house and see how that works. So far, we've, I've received emails that parents are thanking me for that. It doesn't take up two nights of their time, and we can, I think we can do it all on open house night. They will have the opportunity to attend orientation as well as seeing the teachers. So hopefully that'll work. If not, we'll readjust next year. I would like to take this time to introduce the new middle school assistant principal, Amanda Nelson. Amanda is back here. If you'd wave, Amanda started, I told her she did not have to speak the first meeting, so. She's very thankful of that. She's been with me the last two weeks, doing great. We've had some great educational discussions, and I'm looking forward to working with Amanda. You'll see another one, Jenny Simmons is a teacher in my building. She is also doing an ad intern with us this year, an administrative intern. So you will see her at a lot of board meetings also, and she's kind of been involved in some of our discussion this summer. So I'm really looking forward to working with those two, and I think we have a great team, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Brandon, Mrs. Nelson. Glad to have you. Mr. Skipstead?
I also wanted to introduce the assistant principal of the intermediate school and also the assessment director for the district, Rick Pearson. He's already bailed me out, old blue broke down tonight, and he had to tow me back to Brandon, so I did buy him Taco John's, but he's been a great addition.
It's the first time.
Well, I don't know. My wife told me how to buy a new car, but anyway, so with that, he's been a great addition as well, and glad he's on our team, and look forward to the year and working with him. And yeah, we're going to be good to go and ready to roll for the year.
Thank you. We won't make you speak at this first meeting either, but welcome, Mr. Pearson. Glad to have you. All right, Mr. Bab, anything tonight? Nothing tonight? Ms. Foster?
No.
Mrs. Hoffcamp?
No.
Mr. Horst? Mrs. Palmer? It's the quiet group. All right. Mrs. Nelson, anything? Mr. Henshaw?
No, thank you.
Mr. Marso?
Good.
And no board policy. I know everybody is always so sad, and we have none of that. All right. That takes us to first item under general business, the Brandon Valley 2019 General Obligation Bond presentation. This is information only and no action will be taken.
I would like our next guest to join us. Pledge of allegiance, Paul. Put on some gold and silver, Paul. We're going to look at our staff and our students and close now.
Key important so it can pick up my voice. So just want to give you an update or formal presentation on what our bond issue looks like. Total amount of money, $17 million, 16.25 for the construction of that elementary school, $750,000 for land acquisition. Want to clarify the location. Sparta Elementary School would be located on 41st and Sparta Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Critical for the public to know that we acquired this land approximately 10 years ago. So the district has worked in the past and continues to work as we are with this land acquisition to buy land with a vision in mind. So land was acquired approximately 10 years ago. The land acquisition is outlined within this bond committee, or sorry, within this bond issue, 21 acres. It's located west of Veterans Parkway between Madison and Maple Avenue. If you know where Denakamas Farm is, directly south of Denakamas Farm. So those are the locations of the two items within the bond. I would defer to business manager Lombard on the project cost summary. He's broken it down for us regarding the total $17 million in how it would be expected. Paul, yeah, comment on cost summary?
No. (laughing).
I love it. Very good. So key items. I guess the key items that we want to utilize for talking points as the school district is number one, this bond issue is based on school district need, on capacity and need, on growing enrollment or our current enrollment and future enrollment. So school district need is number one regarding our talking points. The second item is no property tax increase estimated, and that is due to the fact that Robert Bennett Elementary will come off of our tax rules in July of 2020, Paul?
Correct.
So that's where the no property tax increase is estimated. The last time I was briefed on that item, we actually thought maybe it would go down a couple of cents. Is that still correct, Paul?
Correct, yes. Now, there's 40 cents currently for Robert Bennett Elementary tax on the 40 cents. Okay. Maybe a couple of cents below that.
Okay. Very good. So talking point number two, no property tax increase is estimated. Another item that I think is important for our public to know is previously we worked to manage our current facilities. We altered a boundary line which took student capacity out of Fred Assam and placed it in Brandon Elementary where we had empty classrooms. And then that allowed us to not go out for a bond a year ago. So I think it's important for folks to know that we really work hard to maximize our current facilities. That allows us ultimately to be great stewards of taxpayer dollars and avoid going out for that bond issue a year prior and increasing the tax limit 40 cents. So that is certainly an item to note. So building overview, and Steve, I would certainly have you jump in at any point in time. The next few slides after this will be images, but it's approximately 82,000 square feet, a few more, I think. But when I talk with Steve about the building, what I hear out of his mouth is it's practical, it's effective, and it's your traditional Brandon Valley Elementary School, utilizing long-lasting building materials.
And I could interject, as you mentioned, it's the combination of Robert Bennett and Robert Bennett's Fred Assam design. This site, we had to reconfigure things a little bit of each school. The majority of the concepts are the same as those two schools, but as we had to arrange it together to better work on the Sparta location, we have images of both that come together.
Very good. Thank you for sharing. Would note that we are looking at and evaluating potentially heat and cooling systems like geothermal and those types of things as we make our plans and we consider what is most cost-effective now and for us in the future. Approximately 600 student capacity, again, very similar to the Robert Bennett Elementary and Fred Assam Elementary size. Classroom structure, and this is directly aligned to our strategic plan and what we are currently doing and utilizing in our other elementaries. You'll have a junior kindergarten room, and then you'll have five sections of K-1, 2, and then we've got four sections of grades three and four. Again, directly aligned to your strategic plan, and that's so important reading goal of having all of our children proficient by the end of third grade. So the classroom structure is directly aligned to your bold strategic plan. And then it's also very important to note that there's a joint city and school playground slash park site, again, very similar to Fred Assam Elementary. Just like Paul commented on how we had some refurnishing at the Fred Assam Elementary in Sioux Falls, the city of Sioux Falls will be reimbursing us for some of those costs. Same type of concept will occur here. There's a little bit of shared parking lot, I believe. There'll be some shared costs with playground equipment and those types of things. So critical for folks to know cooperating with the city of Sioux Falls for a park site there as well. So here you can see, this is an image of Sparta Elementary School. This would be as if you were standing on 41st Street looking to the south. So if you're standing on 41st Street looking to the south, I would note here's your gymnasium here. Obviously, it is a precast concrete walls, the Brandon Valley traditional logo and signage, et cetera. Steve, any comments?
No, I think the one little difference on this school is we found and called spaces like the gymnasiums, usually the precast panels, actually some of what we did at the intermediate school are very cost-effective, very durable, and it's always great to reuse the Brandon Valley links symbol again. They cast it right into the concrete, the age brothers, they don't throw that pattern away.
Very good. So now you would be standing, this is an aerial view from the south looking north. Obviously, you can see playground or the parking concept here, playground here, front entrance will serve us here. It is relevant to note, I'll speak to, the entrances both coming off of Sparta when I get to that slide, but again, an aerial view, this would be your JK and five kindergarten classrooms, and then your first through fourth grade will all be on the separate way. Steve, anything to add?
I just want to kind of identify the site worked out really well in terms of our northwest winds, you know, that we have the main entrance on the south side of the school, the playground's on the south side of the school. So with the northwest winds, we protected that well, and the adjacency of the open grass area, which is way off to your left, just next to the parking lot for the city park, works really good for your facility as well for ball fields, soccer fields, et cetera.
So if you could, if we stand back as possible, you would see the city park would be down this direction.
And kind of right next to the paved playground.
Very good.
Very similar to Fred Assam, how that relationship works.
Excellent. So here you have an ideal view from what I would classify as the south looking north, again, just a shot of the front entrance. I would note that we are utilizing the same entrance concept at the intermediate school with cement bench right by the front entrance. The kiddos can have a place to sit and wait while they wait for parents or boss. That was a nice addition. Anything to add on this, Steve?
Well, I think the main thing I want to kind of identify is the school is simple and practical, but it's a Brandon Valley School District school. We're using your colors, we're using your imagery. I think everyone in that neighborhood is going to know what school district you're in because this design complements your other facilities, and I think that's what you want if that's what you requested.
So here is a floor plan. I would note, you can find your gymnasium up here again, so you have 41st Street is here, Sparta is here, gymnasium, music space, lunchroom, receiving for the custodial staff. Obviously, here is the large lunchroom where the kids will sit. Front entrance is here, and then again, you have your kindergarten JK, special services, et cetera, computer labs, and this general facility, teachers lounge, those types of things. And then here, you have your big winged house, grades one through four. Steve, anything to note?
No, I think, you know, those pond layouts for kindergarten and first through fourth grades are all similar to Fred Assam and Robert Bennett, and from what we've heard from you before, that works out very well. So there is some indoor open space and plenty of conference rooms and speech rooms and all those little spaces that you really, really need.
Here is just an aerial view of that floor plan. Obviously, you can see there is no access, school access off of 41st Street. The bus loop would enter here, the bus line up here, and then the parental drop-off and the parking lot would have an entrance a little further on the south. It is relevant to note that Director Henshaw and I met with the city of Sioux Falls and spoke to them about the intersection here. It will be a lighted intersection, so the crosswalk will be the push-button lit intersection. In addition to down on Faith Avenue further to the west, that would be a push-button lit intersection as well. We will be in a situation where we have to gift them a very small piece of our corner property there so they're able to have enough space to do the ADA compliant work, and we certainly want to work with them on that front. Here again, you can see where the city-school joint park really comes into play. So Steve, anything to note?
Just site drainage works off to the left. Like Fred Assam, when you're in the city of Sioux Falls, there's certain drainage requirements that have to be done, and so we'll be working our civil engineers. The areas in all the lines you see off to the left of the building, in that area is where we'll be having some drainage areas, retention that need to be done to comply with the, it's actually city standards which follow national standards for, because the whole concept real quickly is every time it rains on the land, you don't want it to flow away any faster than what it did when there was no building there at all. So every time you do all the pavement, building, parking lot, water runs away faster. We have to retain it so that it drains away at the same slow rate as if there was no building at all. So we need to incorporate that into the west side of the site, which this layout works very good to do that.
Very good. It is relevant to note, not included within the bond issue, but a separate purchase that we are currently in the process of making. As you guys approved a purchase agreement here a month or so ago, approximately, what I'm going to say, four blocks to the south, 49th Street. So you can see this is 45th Street. We're acquiring approximately 20 acres just south of 49th Street, and in terms of BV Vision 2040, that would serve us as Beavis South Site, the Brandon Valley Intermediate School South Site. So Sparta Elementary School would, kids would go to Beavis South, Fred Assam Elementary kiddos would go to Beavis South, and then the land that you're acquiring in the bond issue, which is on the west side of our school district, which is outlined as West Elementary in BV Vision 2040, those kiddos would also go to Beavis South, leaving Robert Bennett Elementary, BE, and our east side elementary to flow to our current intermediate school site or Beavis North. So it is relevant to note the proximity to that land that we're acquiring here. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on who our volunteers are for our BV Bond Campaign Promotion Committee. The promotion committee works all with donations, no tax dollars, it certainly is relevant to note, but they work all with donations in their campaign to promote the school bond. Our chair is Dr. Ryan Jefferson. Our treasurer is Amy Moss. Our first official large group gathering will occur Tuesday, tomorrow at 6:30 p.m., so we're looking forward to having that group come all together. I would tell you that that group is comprised of the individuals that were involved with the Facility Review Committee. That's how we drew upon our community members to engage in the bond promotion campaign because they were involved in the decision on where to recommend the school be built, et cetera, so they have all of that historical knowledge when sharing and working with the public. You can see a wide variety of meetings that we have planned. I would note that worrying about is obviously probably the most impactful thing that we can do, so we would encourage everyone to share our three key talking points. Again, based on district need, capacity and growing enrollment, the fact our property taxes are estimated not to go up because of great fiscal planning, and then lastly, our ability to previously manage our current facilities to put off getting a bond or going out for a bond to increase taxes, putting that off as long as possible. So those three key talking points. In addition, I provided you with an informational brochure that we have that's been mocked up and ordered. In addition to that informational brochure, we'll utilize some bond election campaign signs, and then we will also be utilizing a newspaper insert, the Brandon Valley Journal. Our official newspaper, the week of August 28th, is running a, what I understand to be a district-wide newspaper campaign, is what I guess I would call it, where Brandon Valley Journal will go in every mailbox in the Brandon Valley School District, and we have these inserts that are extremely cost-effective and efficient to put into the newspaper. We utilized it through the Linsway Promotion a couple of years ago, so really certainly appreciate our official newspaper working with us on that and helping spread the message. So. message. So that's a, that's a new strategy that we haven't utilized before, but we will be utilizing this campaign, um, and then any other ideas that the bond promotion campaign committee comes up with, uh, moving forward. So just wanted to give you a heads up on some of those items and some of those promotional materials. Of course, pending a successful bond issue, I want to make certain everyone is understanding of what that timeline exactly looks like. Uh, obviously, Tuesday, September 10th, vote, remind everybody else to vote, do your civic duty. Um, I think our greatest fear obviously is always voter apathy, so please, please, please encourage, uh, your neighbors and our patrons to get out and vote. Uh, again, fall, the fall 19 winter of 20, we're in that construction planning phase with our architect, um, estimating a bid in January or February-ish, um, paying a successful bond, and then you can see construction begins all of the 2021 school year, we're under construction with a start date, with a start date of school opening in the fall of 2021. Some questions you may receive surrounding boundary lines, uh, what I would tell you is we have a tentative plan or a rough plan on how that will look, what would naturally be, um, a, a good boundary line, however, we will also pull in representatives of our various elementary schools and get their input on it as well. There's some real natural boundary lines that exist for us to, um, minimize having to move students and us absorbing the, the greatest amount of our district's growth into our new school. So, um, with that being said, you know, I thought about as, uh, we were sitting and talking with Steve, what are we committed to when we talk about facility growth? First and foremost, our core operating principle, we're going to create learning environments that result in success, we're also going to take a proactive approach to school growth and facility needs. Visionary planning has occurred in the past and will continue to occur, that's what land acquisition, a decade before you actually need the land is all about. It also, um, helps ensure fiscal responsibility and taking care of some of those bills a ways off and maybe getting a more advantageous price before that land is, um, in higher demand. And then constructing practical, effective, and efficient school facilities, uh, very, very important to us, um, as we look at the successes that we've had as a school district, um, and our elementary schools and how well they hold up. You'll walk into a building and you'll hear people talk about, this, this school looks like it's, it's one or two years old. Well, how old is it? You know, the middle school is a prime example that I, I hear about a lot when I'm talking with papers, they just can't believe the image of our facilities because we utilize such, um, good quality, uh, building products, they're so practical, practical, they're so, so effective and so efficient. And then lastly, we want to continue to be great stewards of, of taxpayer dollars, we want to continue to plan, what, what does our next school look like, how many years does that come off, uh, how many years away is that? Uh, Paul, help me, I think in six or seven years, we have a, uh, a bond coming off of our tax rolls that would potentially allow us to, to move forward into BV Vision 2040 a little further, can you comment on that?
Correct. The current bond issue that we have out there, we refer to as Fred Assam, the high school addition bond issue, it was originally 23 million or 27 million, I can't remember for sure, but it's the largest one that we have out there. That'll come up in, that's 23 million, it'll come up in 2027, that, that'll be paid off. So the timing seems, appears at this point to be right in line with what will be our next step in vision 2040.
I don't have to prep you on those, uh, comments, it's because you know them off the top of your head, so I appreciate that. All right, and then lastly, you know, I kind of commented a little bit, but what does BV look like in, in, in 20 years? You get that, you get that question a lot, or if you do, now you have something specific to refer to, I think it's really exciting to see it coming together, uh, the, the items included within our bond issue are directly aligned to that, uh, one high school as long as possible, uh, we certainly see that being a reality well into the, uh, year 2040, utilizing our Valley Springs site as a, as an academy, light site to alleviate pressure off of the high school, in addition to having one or two additions on our high school to increase capacity, um, and then obviously the other components of BV Vision 2040. So, uh, with that, I would certainly ask the board if they have any questions for Steve at this point in time to ask, I will also entertain any questions you have for myself or certainly Mr. Lomax.
I have one question, um, so Robert Bennis comes off this next summer, that, off the tax roll, when would this one, pending the successful bond, when would it go on the tax roll? Does it like happen right away, like one comes off, one goes on right away?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be seamless, it'll flow right through.
Oh, okay.
Right. The plan would be that the budget that you approve in, uh, next year in July will be supplemented after we pass the bond issue in September because we have to certify that levy by October 1st, so we have a low, therefore the time of the bond issue is September 10th to give us a little bit of time to get that levy on the books going into the year, uh, the next fiscal year or so, correct, it'll just roll right in. Steve, if you could talk just a little bit with the Board of Education about our plans for, uh, potentially utilizing geothermal combination of stuff, and we've never done a school in the past with geothermal just because of that initial cost, but, uh, you've got some alternatives that you've come up with, uh, that we're looking at or you're looking at, I should say.
Oop, I'm sorry, I thought it was on. Um, you always want to heat and cool in the most efficient way, in a practical way. At, uh, the intermediate school, we interjected to you to use what you call ice storage, because what's been happening in the last few years is the, uh, electric companies are charging you peak demand charges, that when you have a big school and you're air conditioning in September, for example, you can really get zapped with higher costs for electricity. And what's worked out very well at the intermediate school is where you make ice during the night when the demand charges for electricity is extremely low, you get the ice created all night, and then during the day, especially the middle of the afternoon, when everybody else is using electricity to run air conditioning, your, uh, chiller does not work because you're pulling the cold water off of the ice. So it works very well to save you the peak demand charges. And then what Paul's also mentioning, what is happening of course as well, as you hear a lot about it, is geothermal wells. You can use geothermal for both heating and air conditioning. Well, what's, uh, some people will say you should do all geothermal, in other words, heat the whole building geothermal, don't use natural gas at all, and air condition everything with geothermal, and don't use electricity in the chiller at all. Well, what you'll find out if you do that, that you have to drill so many wells, you spend so much money upfront that it never pays for itself, you know, compared to gas rates and electric, electric rates. But what we've worked out, the engineers that I love working with is associated consulting engineers, because they've developed this very well, we use what we call a blended system. There's some geothermal wells, and then you still use a gas boiler, but you do the geothermal wells first, and then when it gets really cold, then the boiler just supplements. And then the same thing for the air conditioning, you use geothermal first, and then when it gets too hot, they, they can't keep up, then you start to use your chiller, but then you use the chiller with the ice storage. So it's, it, it all comes together in a very efficient way and the, and, and you're not spending so much money upfront for all of these geothermal wells. You do some, just not everything, and that's what we'll be proposing for you, and you get great, uh, very good, uh, economical utility rates as years go on, and, and then of course you add to it the LED lights that you guys have been hearing, and I know Ty, you've been switching out some buildings as you go, the LED lighting, uh, just saves you huge on electrical costs as well. And those prices have dropped enough now that the new school, uh, all of our new schools within the last year, two years have been all LED because it's worth it, and it's not so expensive anymore. And that's what your new school will be too, all LED lighting, so, very energy efficient and, uh, very, very durable, good products, so. Any other things or, just don't ask me a lot of engineering questions, but, no, the other thing I want to mention, uh, real quickly, your schedule works out really well. You know, this year in, in 2019 has been such a bad year for construction, and as any farming, it's been so wet. Well, it can't be that way next year, it just can't be, two years in a row, so your timing works out good, so. Anything else from anyone, or?
Thanks, Steve, certainly appreciate all your work and the solid partnership that we have with you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, number two, 2019 summer lunch presentation, this, again, this is information only, no action.
Well, good evening. In my 50-point or page PowerPoint here for you guys tonight, I'll be really, it's like five slides, I promise. Uh, just a neat recap about our summer lunch program, I had about 12 different, uh, staff who wanted to work over the summer, and they, they had a blast, they rotated their shifts, and in the end, with how many students we were feeding or kiddos every day that we were feeding, we ended up having to staff seven people on a regular basis, up from my normal six because we just needed to get them through, and so it was really, uh, a highlight for us. Um, so we started out one week short because we had an extended school year, so instead of serving 43 days like last year, we only served 38 days, but we ended up serving actually about 1,737 extra meals. Um, it was really neat because we had a goal of hoping to maybe hit 500 at one point in time, and within the, uh, second week, I think our seventh day of serving, we actually served 520 some kids, our highest day, I'm trying to look, I might be ahead of myself on here too, but our highest day, we actually peaked with, uh, 578 students or kids fed. Um, and in today's sixth, we decided, why we didn't do it a year or so ago, and Mr. Horse might probably question you too, but we used to have the serving line out in the comments because we were focusing on the actual, uh, watching so that there wouldn't be any issues going on in the, uh, room. But we ended up moving the serving line back into the serving area, put up two serving lines, and pushed people through really fast, because one day I'm standing there as I'm wiping tables and it's like, it's taking 20 minutes to get these people through the line for a free meal, so we sped up, uh, the meal service very quickly. Total student meals though were 1,468, or 1,4684, we had a lot of adult meals again, we did have our paid staff meals, total overall was 15,381, and, uh, so it was really neat to have that kind of an increase. Um, by the numbers a little bit, uh, summer lunch, I think, makes sense. Uh, our federal reimbursement was up about 10 cents over last year for the summer meals, and so our total federal reimbursement, you can see the numbers up there, 59,000 plus dollars. Our labor was at 15,310, based on my estimates with, uh, not including anything with benefits if there were, because there shouldn't have been really anything factored there, our total food costs, food and supply cost. So we see a net gain again of $21,000, um, where last year with our 43 serving days, uh, we had a net gain of 18,747, so that is definitely going to take care of what you decided, uh, some time ago on the waiving the reduced fee, and I think that makes a huge difference on what we're doing with the kiddos in the district, uh, we're serving about 83% on a regular basis, uh, of reduced meals. Those number of reduced meals that we'll cover would be 59, or 52,905 meals, or about 301 students if we had that many on the reduced status at this point in time. And last year, our total average was 277 students across the board. And so my goal actually this year is to see probably, hopefully seeing a five to seven percent increase on getting more of those reduced students eating with us, 83 is not a good number, I want to be in the 90s, uh, since their meals are free, just like the free students. And as I said, our record day, it was June 25th, 578 meals, uh, popcorn chicken day, I'm guessing, and, uh, average daily meals were 386, and it was, a lot of those big days were tied in with, uh, summer reading, although I am told I will be putting pizza on, on Wednesdays next year, just to kind of pull them in a little bit more, uh, and that was very well attended on Wednesdays too. And that is what I had, if you had any questions for me, so, or comments.
I just had a quick comment, um, so I took my daughter Hazel to lunch a few times this summer, and, uh, she had a few takeaways I wanted to share. Um, it was really good practice for her because she started in kindergarten this fall, and she's never gone through a cafeteria before, and so it was really good practice for her to go through the line and speak loudly and use her manners, um, so that in and of itself was really awesome, so thanks for providing that practice opportunity for her. Um, I was really impressed with the efficiency of the whole process, um, and I was really impressed with the quality of food and the quantity of food, um, and so, and I loved seeing all the kids there, and, um, I just thought it was a really good experience, and so I just wanted to thank you for getting all that going and, um, having that happen, so, thank you.
Thanks for saying that. One side, quick side note, it was really cool to see about a week after, um, we were done, somebody posted on, I don't know what, what a Facebook type thing, saying, you would not believe how cool it was to see that the staff are smiling, they're having fun, the kids are being well-fed, and they wanted to do a big shout out to my staff, and that was, that meant a lot to them, I got to share that with them, so, uh, they enjoy doing it, so, but thanks.
Thank you very much, Kay. Uh, item number three, approved memorandum of understanding between the Sioux Falls School District and Brandon Valley School District regarding the Dubuque Avenue tax code error.
Uh, thank you very much. Relevant to note, the Sioux Falls School Board will also be acting on, uh, the same memorandum of understanding at their meeting, uh, that is happening at this, uh, this same general time. Reader's Digest version of what occurred, I believe it was in 2015, uh, Minnehaha County erred in their, um, computer software system and changed the tax code for 26 properties located on the east side of Dubuque Avenue, um, they moved them from the Sioux Falls School District to the Brandon Valley School District. Uh, we have had a historical tax analysis conducted on those properties and found that to be factual and true, so that east side of Dubuque Avenue, 26 properties in 2015 were coded in error to Sioux Falls School District, or from Sioux Falls School District to the Brandon Valley School District. And then for three years, we garnered the, um, ultimately the, the capital outlay tax levy, um, and the other, uh, various levies, um, that they should have been receiving. General, general fund is not applicable as that's a formula fund, um, and, uh, the state kicks in on that, so the general fund is, is not truly relevant in the situation. Um, what I would tell you is, is that outlined in the memorandum of understanding, um, approximately 19, sorry, I gotta get in here, $18,290 will be paid from the Brandon Valley School District back to Minnehaha County, and ultimately what that is, is that is, um, the, the amount of money that they paid in additional taxes if they would have been in the Sioux Falls School District because our tax levy is just a little higher with some of our new school bond issue like things. So that's the difference in the tax levy over the course of those, uh, three years on those 26 properties, and then, um, the $55,156 is ultimately that capital outlay, um, levy that we received over the course of those three years on those 20, 20 some odd properties that should have been going to the Sioux Falls School District. So we have met, we have met with Minnehaha County, uh, we've met with the Sioux Falls School District, actually both, um, organizations multiple times, uh, did our due diligence, um, met with the, uh, individuals who platted the land originally, uh, found this to be true. It is, it is a situation where 26 properties were moved, uh, from the Sioux Falls School District to the Brandon Valley School District. Once it was found, uh, it is necessary to move them back to the Sioux Falls School District because statute clearly defines that, uh, boundary change can't, can't happen. Um, so that's why we present to you this memorandum of understanding, and it is certainly relevant to note and important for everyone to note that this is not a boundary line change, uh, we would not do that, um, this is a situation where the tax code error occurred on their end, and now it has to go back, so, uh, would certainly entertain any questions you have, Paul, if you have any additional items, feel free to share.
So, to be clear then, it doesn't impact any students at all, right? The kids that were in those houses were already attending in Sioux Falls, let's say, and so it's a money thing, but it has nothing to do with kids, is that right?
Sure, so, so there is a, an impact on students that they're not, they're no longer residents of the Brandon Valley School District, so they're required to apply for open enrollment. The biggest impact comes with like the busing fee as an example I would use, so an open enrolled student from Sioux Falls coming to Brandon Valley, uh, pays $150 per semester, per child, no family maximum, okay? Well, that's a, that's a, um, that's a, um, bus pass fee that they were previously not paying because they were further away, et cetera. We, we have provided and will be providing those families, um, with free busing services for We have provided and will be providing those families with free busing services for this year from within the Brandon Valley School District. So we're waiving their fee for one year, but moving forward, they will be required to pay that fee. But that's the basic overview. All of those kiddos were already in our count and in our rolls and what...
How many kids are we talking about?
It was four families and approximately eight or nine kids.
Yeah, not a lot, not a lot.
Yeah, no, not a lot.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this item for Superintendent Larson or Mr. Lundberg? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Sioux Falls School District and Brandon Valley School District regarding the Dubuque Avenue tax code error.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, under general business, approve the eCare health services agreement between Brandon Valley School District and Navara Health for telemedicine services at Valley Springs Elementary in the amount of 2,500 plus additional student fees effective August 1st, 2019 through August 1st, 2022, as presented.
Very good. So, Madam Chair, first and foremost, as outlined in the school board strategic plan, we're continually researching effective and efficient ways to deliver services. What I would tell you is as we are a growing school district, that's becoming more and more important in some of our support services specifically. What we are doing here is ultimately approving eCare services or telemedicine, school nurse services for Valley Springs Elementary. They will still have a nurse assigned to their school to deal with a significant emergency plan in the event that there's a child that needs that type of plan created, et cetera. But the more day-to-day, run-of-the-mill items will be handled via telemedicine with the eCare services. The long-range vision of this potential pilot is as we add schools or continue to add schools, it may be an effective and efficient way to provide health support services to our various schools without increasing the number of FTE nurses we have while providing a more effective health service to our students. So like right now, for example, if you're at Valley Springs Elementary and you don't have the nurse on site, and you come in with a very sore throat, Principal Palmer or Lynette put on the rubber gloves, I think, and they engage with that child about, okay, you know, how are you feeling, okay, should we call mom, et cetera, et cetera. What the eCare tele-nursing, telemedicine does is it provides an interaction via iPad between the nurse and the employee, which would be Lynette or the secretary or Principal Palmer, and then also a registered nurse that's stationed at Avera eCare in Sioux Falls. And they have probes, so for example, if they want to know their temperature, there's a, well, you put the plastic, plastic item on the temperature gauge, and you put it in their ear and they get their temp. Or if they want to look in their throat, they have a microscopic camera where they put on a protective piece, they shine it into the student's mouth. So, that's just an example of some of the types of services that the eCare tele-nursing will provide on a daily basis to our students at Valley Springs Elementary. It's exciting to not only pilot a program that has the potential to be really effective and efficient for our district moving forward as we, as we expand our number of buildings, but also to improve and increase the quality of health services that we're providing to those students at Valley Springs Elementary. So, that's the Reader's Digest version. I have toured the facility on two separate occasions, one time with the regional superintendents group, and one time with Business Manager Lundberg. I believe Business Manager Lundberg had toured the facility on a couple of occasions. So we have that feel for it. In addition to that, we conducted our reference checks with other schools that are utilizing the service, that provided outstanding recommendations on the quality of health services provided through the eCare telemedicine for school nursing. So, that is, that is the short-range, the short-range plan. I would tell you that the choice to utilize Valley Springs is based on the numbers, and when I say that, in addition to having a one-time setup fee, there's also a per-student cost. So what we're doing is we have a one-time setup fee of $2,500 plus, I think it's $15, I'd have to pull the memorandum of understanding, or sorry, the contract, but it's $15, $15 times 100 kids per year, so it was the most economically advantageous thing to do for us to utilize Valley Springs as the pilot for the program. So, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have.
I have just a quick comment question. I was at a TEDx a couple of years ago in Vermillion, and they were talking about the whole telemedicine thing and how literally, they were explaining how it saved somebody's life in northwest South Dakota, which is obviously hurting for medical help, so I see some exciting things. And so I, and so there's other schools that are practicing this particular type of thing, and I heard that you guys travel, but what do our nurses think of the facility? Have our nurses toured the facility? Have our nurses met with any of these people? Are, you know, are nurses engaged in this process because...
Sure.
I mean, they're our healthcare providers and our staff, are they involved at all in this process?
Yeah, great, great question. So I have actually met with our school nurses four times or so over the course of the last few years, and it has surrounded a variety, a variety of topics between, you know, a number of students that they have to service, a number of nurses needed or desired, a variety of things on that front. And one of the items that I shared with them is we're constantly evaluating and researching innovative strategies to, to increase the effectiveness of what we do. So I would say that they are aware, they're well aware of the eCare nursing services.
But they didn't, they've never been, you guys never took them there?
I can't say they have or they haven't. I personally have not taken them to the facility.
We didn't involve them in the conversation at that level, then?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the eCare, I myself have also visited facilities, been around it quite a bit. I know Avera eCare is like number one globally, like they are very, very well, I guess, recognized. I know, like even NATO is looking to adopt them, so they, they are second to none. So that, there is no issues. I think Valley Springs is a great place to incorporate for a support system. I think the message, as to probably what you're saying, I think our current nurses to make sure the message is very loud and clear, how much we do value their services, that they currently are providing for the district, and the expertise that they deliver for us. So, you know, probably finding out how, I think, giving, making sure that they have the message that we're by no means trying to substitute their services overall over the district. This is really a support, and I think it does offer a good support, because I think a lot of them are jumping from one school to the next and trying to be many places at once. So I think this offers a great tool, because I know even a lot of clinics where they have nurses and physicians even have this as a support service. So it can be, I think, a support for a very large and growing district where we might have it as a support and backup to our current nursing, but it'd be great to get them to plug in and find out how they feel it can be a support tool for them, so that they can be more engaged in building like the very vast, I know they do diabetes management curriculum, they do a lot of things in the classroom, and they may be able to get more involved in there, but that's a great thing to find out how we can engage them more, maybe in some of those things that only they can do where we can't, maybe use the eCare services.
Well, yeah, I think sometimes, you know, we spend a lot of time in the district with the top 20 people, and they talk about thought circles, and when you don't have all the information about something, you fill in the gaps, and you, you're naturally going to worry and, or wonder about it, or what does it do, what doesn't do, and I think also not just necessarily for our nurses, but for our clientele out in Valley Springs. You know, just the, you mean, we're, we're not going to get, you know, just, you're going to fill in that gap. We're not going to get a nurse? Well, what you don't understand is she's been taking care of that stuff all this time. This is actually a better thing for you. And so I think really doing a job of communicating this to the people and the clientele in Valley Springs, the kids and their parents in Valley Springs, would be really important so that they would understand they're actually getting something over and above what they've ever gotten in the past. The value to our nurses in terms of freeing them up for other things as well, it's just when we introduce something new and we don't have those information pieces, sometimes that can create worry when it probably doesn't need to be there. It would be my only thought. That's the only reason I wanted to maybe bring it up above the line and talk about it, is because the more you talk about this, you're going, oh, this is a great deal. This is a super thing, it's the type of thing our district should be doing, but if it's just in here and we don't talk about it, then we leave people to make their own decisions about what it is, or what they think it is. So I applaud the district for making the move. I think it's a great move.
And in our, our research and in our administrative function of finding efficiencies and more effective, more effective services, our communications with Avera have been very clear that, once we got under contract, they would be directly engaged with our school nurses, they would be directly involved with that. So ultimately, the process of all of that information surrounding wraparound services, which is really what these are, you still have the same exact school nurse that you did, you now have an improved service on a daily basis, and it's potentially a long-term strategy for us to be more effective and more efficient. All of that will come with just a little bit of time. People just have to have a little patience, so, great questions.
Having had two daughters go to Valley Springs Elementary and having gotten phone calls about, oh, yeah, your one daughter got cut on the bleachers and you need to come out and get sutures, and by the time you're driving frantically all the way out and all the way back to the hospital, having something like this, knowing that's an expert, not that you, not that you and Lynette are not expert, because I know you are in just about everything, because we make all sorts of devices for bloody noses, and I know we do all that ahead of time. I help do some of that. But just knowing that, you know, because nursing services are limited out there, to however many, one day a week, half a day a week, I don't know. Knowing that you have, though, being a nurse myself, having a professional nurse, look at that care plan, and there's nothing that's going to change there, and I just want the nurses in the district to understand that we do value them. But this will definitely, if my kid is sick, if their, you know, head's gushing, if there's, you know, a cop plane on the slide with them and they get hurt, or whatever that happens out at Valley, because Valley is a special place. It's just nice to know that Lynette or Mrs. Palmer can dial up the eCare nurse, they can take a look at him, boom, it's not having to wait 15 minutes for someone to speed out there. So I think, just, I agree that this is a supplement and an asset, and we have to remember, we have 128 square mile geographic range of district, we are not a small district. And I think anything we can do to help supplement our staff and help out is a great thing, so that's all I had. Anybody else?
I've got one question. Is there a division between what this eCare would see versus somebody, but that you need to call 911? Is there a differentiation?
Oh, yeah, for certain.
They, and then, so when you call in, they'll ask some of those questions, and they have a pretty clear kind of check almost, they'll let you know kind of upfront, like, hey, here's what, and they can link you directly from that call to emergency services and keep with you while you're kind of going to that. So they almost act as a dispatch, or get you linked to dispatch from there.
So, just example, a kid on the playground, all of a sudden collapses or goes into convulsions, and you know he's not an epileptic or diabetic or anything like that, that's a basic 911 call you would...
Absolutely, and you wouldn't need to call eCare from there, you just call 911.
Any other discussion around this item? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the eCare health services agreement between the Brandon Valley School District and Navara Health for telemedicine services at Valley Springs Elementary in the amount of 2,500 plus additional student fees effective August 1st, 2019 through August 1st, 2022, as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Good discussion. Items, what's that? One through four. Yeah, thank you for renumbering that for me, I'm having a moment. I would entertain a motion to approve consent items number one through four, under general business, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Personnel items, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through 15, as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Three items, 16, 17, 18 are information only for your review. Under communication, there are no building permit applications this month, and there is one board of education thank you from Mrs. Anderson for being able to be the SNA president for first and second year and allowing her CNS staff to attend. Formal board reports, does anyone have one they would like to present tonight?
I guess I'm just going to reiterate what Jared said a little bit earlier, building and grounds. We are going to have that bond committee put together, or get together tomorrow night to get it implemented and get it going, which is tomorrow night at 6:30 in this, in this room, and that's all I have there. But also, last week, at the Associated School Boards Association meeting, besides the fact that Brandon's been recognized as being the number one school in the state, we also at this convention last week had the privilege to have one of our very own be recognized as the most outstanding school board member in the state of South Dakota, which is our President Renee Olm. So... As a little token...
Good, yay! One more sand for church. Thank you.
Well, you don't get recognized for something like this without having outstanding people here and here, so this is not just about me, this is about us, this is about our team, this is about our district. One of the comments that I hear a lot is, oh, when I go to different breakout sessions at board conferences and retreats, is our board has, you know, such dysfunction, and we have someone who keeps promising people things, and we have, you know, all these things going on and drama, whatever. I want to compliment everyone that's sitting at this table and everyone out in the audience. We are a highly effective school board, and I hear that a lot. As you can see, I kind of like quick meetings. This is not a 17-minute one, but that's okay. We need to have discussions when we need to have discussions, but yet if there's really nothing to sit and banter and discuss about, you do not see any of us up here wasting our time. Something that you need to know about me and my leadership style is, I don't know the answer to everything, so my comment is if someone has a question about something business-related or business-related or, you know what I'm saying, you go to the source. And what I try to tell new board members at orientation is, go to the source, ask the questions. If it's something the public needs to hear about, yes, we will have that discussion. I think that we're a very transparent district, and I'm just very proud of all of us. So, thank you for the gift, and thank you for the recognition, but it's not all about me. It's all about the kids. But I didn't get to say that when I accepted my award at the other, so, if we remember that, we can, we will always do the right thing. So, thank you. Okay, anything else? All right. Then we are at the end of our normal agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for coming. I like this.